Good evening and welcome to the March 5th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Judy Miller and I call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. The first order of business is community comments. So let me first ask, do we have any community comments? Okay, great. Then I'm going to read my little preamble and then I will turn to you. Okay? So next on our agenda this evening is community comments. Excuse me. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment but for whom it is not possible or prefer to attend in person this evening. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. As chair of this meeting, it is my responsibility to facilitate this communication -- I'm so sorry -- between the public and the committee, and the committee present this evening. I personally believe this communication is a critical element to assist members in discharging the responsibilities of the positions they've been elected to hold. To effectively facilitate community comments, I encourage anyone providing comments to consider that the volunteers who comprise these committees are your neighbors, friends, and fellow community members. We welcome all points of view, but I would respectfully ask that you treat these committee members in a manner consistent with that in mind. Collectively, we are here to support the administration who in turn assists our educators and support staff to educate, care for, invest in, and inspire our children. Community comments are not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and Mark will be graciously letting you know when your three minutes are up, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comments section of this meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted, except that this is a public hearing and so we will solicit comments after the presentation with regard to the budget. This is standard operating procedure in school committees across our three districts. If you desire more information or have a specific question, please contact a committee member who's on the committee who can help you. Okay, so, and please, tell us your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Mashir Pournman. I live at 41 Woodland Street in Sherburne.
Thank you.
I have decided to come here tonight to speak because I care deeply about this community and I am hoping to get your help because I don't know where else to turn except to our elected school. I have a first and a fourth grader at Pine Hill School and I'm grateful for the amazing teachers who have been touching my children's heart daily. But after I have expressed concern about the school system, I am disappointed with the treatment I have received from the Pine Hill Administration and the Regional School Superintendent's Office. As a public high school teacher myself for six years, I have the background to see problems in a school. At Pine Hill School, I have seen the demise of academics and mishandling in hiring an important school administrator. In the process, I have become increasingly frustrated in attempting to bring change for the better. This has left me to feel unheard and even ignored. For example, on February 15, I emailed Superintendent Beth McCoy. I reported that in my daughter's fourth grade Spanish class, there have been three different teachers this year, and I just heard the third teacher plans to resign. They don't currently have a teacher since after the break. Not once this year, the parents did receive a communication from the administration about the discontinuity of the teachers. This class, which meets three times a week, is more like a babysitting service where students frequently watch movies in English instead of receiving academic instruction. I had noticed weaknesses in the Spanish program many years, many months ago, and about two years ago, I reached out to Dr. Brown about my concern. Her reaction was that she was not too interested in listening, and now the Spanish program is in shambles. I also wrote about the problem in my daughter's fourth grade class. Her teacher is out of school at least once a week, and many mornings she's not in the classroom. Students are told that the teacher is at a meeting. There should not be any scheduled meeting during instruction time. I mentioned the hiring process of the Pine Hill principal, a process that the community was mostly informed rather than being genuinely participated and to weigh in. This was done at a time when the community is already harboring serious concern about the school leadership. As of today, I still haven't heard from Ms. McCoy. I understand that the superintendent is busy managing a $40 million budget as she told the Pine Hill student body at a recent old school meeting. However, the superintendent's main job is to serve the community and to ensure the quality and continuity of the education throughout the district while demonstrating the utmost professionalism. In closing, I implore you all, member of the school community, including parents, to respect them all. Our schools spend a lot of time, energy, and fund on DEI program, and as we strive to do this important work, the true and honest meaning of diversity and inclusion is to make sure we encourage diverse voices to be raised, heard, and acknowledged. I feel ignored, not only as a member of this community, but as a member of a culturally diverse one. What message does this send? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
May I just ask you to repeat your name? I'm sorry.
Mashir Pournman.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anyone on Zoom? Somebody on Zoom has commented.
No? Okay. All right, good. Thank you. So we shall then move on with our agenda. Okay, so, I am now going to open the, our fiscal year '25 Dover Sherburne Regional Schools' budget hearing. Keep looking at you, Dawn. I appreciate you nodding. And so I want to start out the budget hearing by giving a very short introduction, and then Superintendent McCoy and Ms. Fattori will chime in and give more in-depth information. At the outset, I want to thank the towns of Dover and Sherburne for their support of the regional school district. We strive to provide an excellent educational experience to all of our students. As you may know, our budgeting process for fiscal year '25 began in late fall of 2023. We have followed each town's fiscal guidance and built a budget based on the district's needs, evaluating our expenditures on an ongoing basis. Our process includes multiple meetings with our school committee members as well as involvement and commitment from our leadership team. In every instance, we try to spend wisely, save where we can, so that we can fund the needs as they arise. For example, as you will see, whenever we have educator retirements, we hire less expensive educators and use the savings to offset the normal salary increases built into our collective bargaining agreement. In that way, we're able to keep our costs in line. We are proud of the fact that in a year when inflation has been running at over 4%, our budget increase is only 3.23%. We've worked hard to spend wisely while maintaining the excellent level of service to our community that we have all come to expect. So now I will turn it over to Superintendent McCoy, who will begin our presentation.
Thank you. First, I would just like to thank my colleague Dawn Fattori, who guides us all through this process and of course does all of the behind-the-scenes detail work with all of the numbers. So thank you, Dawn, for making this all possible. I'd like to thank the school committee for your partnership through this process, as well as our two finance, town finance committees, who we've met with multiple times, and most importantly, to our taxpayers of Dover and Sherburne, who give so generously to support academic excellence for all of our students. As you know, this process begins in October, when we ask our building principals to meet with their instructional leaders and determine the needs based on their budget last year, what needs to change or shift. They then meet with the four central office administrators, including Dawn, Denny, Kate McCarthy, and myself. We go over the budget, looking at it from a number of different angles, including teaching and learning, special education, et cetera. We then bring forth, with Dawn's help, version 1.0 to the region. We go back, we continue to make decisions as we plan for next year. We incorporate retirements, as Ms. Miller said, into our decision-making and then come up with version point two, which we then share with our two town finance committees. And we're here tonight as part of the process to have an open hearing with our public to gain feedback and insight. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Dawn to go into the details.
Thank you both. So I just wanted to give you an overview of the work that goes involved, is involved with the budget development process, and now we'll sort of go through some of the steps. So the budget assumptions that we use, and this is for all three school districts, we're looking at regular school operations, and we're saying regular now because for many years we had COVID, post-COVID, but we're now sort of pretty much back to where we were before that occurred, with level enrollment. So at the region, our projections are showing around 1,080 students is the projection. We have about 1,100 right now. So that's a swing of about 30. Doesn't have a huge impact on the budget because if you think about that spread between grades six through 12, that is not a huge shift. As both Ms. Miller and Ms. McCoy mentioned, we do build our budget in compliance with the town's budget guidance. So the town of Dover requests that we sort of build our budget with level service. So basically, that means whatever the cost is, they want us to maintain the services. Sherburne's a little bit different guidance. They tell us to do levels funded, means you've got the same number of dollars, the same amount of dollars, you have to figure out how to make that work with what you need. However, they do give us contractual allowances for contractual agreements, so our contracts. And then other than that, if we're adding new things, we sort of have to support it a little bit more as to why that's needed. And then again, we build this budget working with all of our administrators and our educators along the district strategy. So I've included the five sort of buckets that we have, and so where those come into play, we try to tie everything that we're adding or doing into our strategy. And then again, we are continuing the assessment of student needs during the multiple COVID-related transitions, and I think when we talk about the addition of the middle school counselor, that's a little bit of that, just continuing to need more support to our students at the middle school. So what sort of drives our budget? Obviously payroll and benefits really is 85% of our budget. So that's really what is driving our budget development. And our contractual increases, we do have ratified contracts with all of our bargaining units right now, except for one for '25, is looking at a 3% increase. But keep in mind that our educators also receive what's called STEPS increases, and those range from 4% to 9%. So you could have a staff member getting 3 plus 4, 3 plus 9, 3 plus 6. So it's not just a straight 3% at all. It depends on where they're moving along in the matrix. And then that averages, if you look at all of our educators, are really about an additional 1.6%. So if you look at the educators and you're looking at what the salary increases are, if you use a 4.6 increase, that's probably the average of what we're seeing in the budget. And we do have a reserve for educational assistance because we're getting ready to start their contract negotiations for the next two years. We do, I talked about one new staffing position. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. And then we have increases for some existing part-time positions that need to be moved up percentages. So we did add a .9 FTE. .7 of that is already in our fiscal year '24 budget because we needed to do it currently for the cohorts that were here at the region. As we noted, we do do salary savings from retirement, and then we do have staffing changes that happen post-budget from when we had approved our budget last year, because if you think about it, we're doing it in March and we have until August, and there's some savings from that. So that is definitely is a huge help to balance the 4.6% increases. We actually had salary savings in the budget this year of $180,000. The region, because it sort of operates as its own town, we also have to build in the budget our healthcare premiums for all of our employees, and we saw approximately a 10% increase in those rates. Obviously, that's a budget driver for us. And we are continuing to fund our OPEB liability trust. So that is post-retirement benefits for our retirees. The region is responsible for their cost share of that, and we fund that pay-as-you-go for the current-year premiums, but then we're also putting aside money to start funding the liability. In addition, another related benefit is all of our employees who are not in the educators' MTRS is in Norfolk County Retirement, and on an annual basis, we do have to contribute to that for purposes of retirement. All the others, so you've taken that, you've got 15% left down that we look at, and so we continue to do trend budgeting for all of our other operating accounts. And basically, what that means is we look at what departments are spending in each of their line items, and if we see that we are either going over consistently or under, we look at that, go dig into it a little bit deeper, and if we can, we reduce. So we're reducing it back down to actual. As we talked about student enrollment on the other slide, we're projecting, like I said, 1,080 for fiscal year '25. That does have an impact when you look at the town's assessment, because that is how the budget then is spread between Dover and Sherburne. And so in any given year, that could have a substantial change in what they're seeing as their increase for the region's assessment. This particular year, it was just a really small swing, and both increases actually went towards Sherburne. So they picked up an extra .37% in their assessment percentage for the operating and .07 for capital. Okay, so what do we have? So our overall budget increase this year is just a little over $900,000. That's a 3.23% increase. Last year, we were in the same, basically the same arena with 3.51% increase. Looking at what our per pupil budgeted expenditure is, I think that's a good statistic to look at. It's not of our long-term debt. We're looking at $26,068 per pupil. In fiscal year '24, it was a little bit lower, but keep in mind, even though you may go down in students, your operating costs basically stay the same. So the expectation was that our per pupil expenditure would go up slightly. That is actually right in the middle, though. If you go and look on DESI's site to see what other districts are doing, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're a little bit above state. I think we do a really good job of providing a lot for a little to respect the finances of our towns. So you can't really look at the operating budget increase and see how that plays out with the towns, because you can see based on the formula, Dover has seen a 2.42% increase in their assessment year over year, and Sherburne's seen a 3.61. And you can see where there, in fiscal year '24, there was a larger swing in the census assessment for Sherburne. So you can see they had an increase last year of $700,000, where Dover had a decrease of $4,000. So you can't look at our operating budget and understand how it's going to play out with the two town assessments. But those numbers are what goes into the town's budget when they talk about the schools as their piece of the assessment. So I know this looks like a lot of numbers, but basically, these are all of our sources for revenues, and you're looking at three years of actual and two years of budget. Obviously, we have about 86% of our total budgets covered by our assessments from Dover and Sherburne. We get about 12% from the state, both for what's called Chapter 70, which is basic school operations, and Chapter 71 is transportation, and we receive that reimbursement because we are a regional school district, and so we're required to transport, and because of that, they actually reimburse you for your, part of your transportation. And then we have various fees that we assess for parking, high school activities, middle school activities, athletics. Our bank and trust, we're seeing great results on that right now with really good interest rates. And the last thing I'll point out is what we call excess and deficiency. And if you attend the town meetings and you hear them talk about free cash, excess and deficiency is technically the region's free cash. We're allowed to keep 5% of our operating budget in a reserve, and traditionally, we bring into, offset the current-year budget whatever our excess revenues were in the previous year. So if you follow our monthly financial reports, you'll see that we're having obviously a great response, a return on our bank, on our investments, so that interest income is way over budget, and we've also received a little bit more in Chapter 71. So we take those numbers, and if we had known we were going to get those numbers, we would have offset last year's budget. We apply it to the this year's budget, so it offsets what the towns have to pay. So that's sort of the revenue side. And then looking at the expenditure side, sort of back, looking at categories, as I said, salary is another compensation along with the benefits is about 85% of our budget. Then we have other expenditures, transportation, and our buildings and grounds. The other piece, I talked about excluding long-term debt from the per pupil expenditure, the number that you see for '25 is actually the last payment on the outstanding bonds on this building, the middle school. And so we will actually not have any debt service in fiscal year '26, which is really exciting. So that's looking at it in categories. I think another way to look at the budget sort of from the public standpoint is the buckets that the expenses go into. So if you look at our total operating budget, 61% is direct educational expenses, and we'll walk through each category. 20% is administrative and the building expenses, 17% of the benefit-related expenses, and then 2% represents the debt service. So as much as we can put towards direct educational expenses, that's where we work really hard to put all of our efforts in that bucket. So just looking at our educational service expenditures, which between staffing and operating costs are approximately $17.5 million, there are some details there about the number of staff that are in our general education program, our special education program, guidance, our support services, and then our extracurricular sports. And then the million dollars in expenditures is really sort of what we need to provide the curriculum and the education, the textbooks, the software, the general supplies, technology, which we know has become a huge piece of school operations, professional development for all of our staff. And then also in that million dollars is the extracurricular activities, which predominantly are at the high school with athletics. The new request we had, so in '25 in the educational services that we are bringing forward, is a 1.0 addition of the middle school for a third guidance counselor. So what that's going to allow the middle school to do is actually assign a guidance counselor to a student, and that student will have the same guidance counselor for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So by having three guidance counselors, three grades, you'll rotate up much similar to what they do at the high school. So you'll have that as a continuity. By doing that, so obviously looking at Sherburne and wanting us to do level funded, we said, what can we do to sort of find money in the budget now to offset that? And one position that we have is called an academic coordinator. A lot of the services that that academic coordinator provides is really for students when they're out of school for an extreme amount of time, coming back from medical, family issues. They need that transition back into school. Their counselor, since they'll have such a strong relationship built with them because they'll have them for sixth, some of the eighth grade, they're going to take on those responsibilities. So we were able to add an FTE, obviously it's an educator, but sort of help partially fund it by reducing the academic coordinator, so that the net budget increase for that add is $34,000. Based on the student current cohorts, and some of this we already had to do this year, as I mentioned, we're adding a .5 FTE for our multi-language learner. We are seeing a lot of new cohorts of students that need the additional support for language, and a .4 increase for our BCBA. And that budget increase equals $75,000. The really, the only new request we had for basic operations is the replacement at the high school of the world language lab technology equipment along with the software. So they're updating sort of the, I think that's 20 years old they have is the software. So we're coming up to the 21st century. We're hoping it'll be wireless. We're getting a new cart, laptop cart that could then probably be actually more efficiently used by going to the various classrooms versus having to go to a language lab. So that's a one-time expense to bring that on. Next year, that money will come back out, and so they are excited about that update. And then we are starting back on our technology replacement cycle. When we entered COVID, we actually needed to do a lot of equipment, our technology equipment purchases to get everyone up and running for the remote and then the hybrid. Based on that, we were able to buy all of that technology with money provided through the state and federal grants. So now that we're four years past that, we're starting the replacement cycle back into our operating budget, and so we're replacing all the educator devices at the region, and we've started doing those much like we have here at the middle school with the one-to-one for students on a three-year annual lease. So the beauty of that is you don't have a large purchase in one year, you evenly distribute it over three years. But that's what we're going to still see in the next couple of years, is watching that line item actually get back up to where it used to be before we had the opportunity to purchase it with all the COVID money. So those are our new requests for '25. That plays a little bit into the increase, but if you think about those, and then you think about what I told you, that we had $180,000 in salary savings, that's why our budget's only going up about 3%. So looking at the other buckets, this is our administrative and related support services. Gives you a little insight into what that is made up of. It's actually central office, most of us here, everything you need to sort of run a school district. It's also your building base staff here at the region with the middle school and the high school, and it's also our facilities and ground staff to maintain this campus. So that's evenly split between, that's one where you get 50/50, because it actually is pretty expensive to do the building and grounds operation here, including all of our utilities, our transportation costs for our 19 buses, and then general non-educational operating expenses. So that's approximately $5.8 million of our budget. And then we follow to the next category, which is employee benefits. The largest piece of that actually is our healthcare. We currently cover about 150 of our employees on both individual and family plans. Just to give you sort of an insight as to what that costs, a family plan, it's cost approximately for the employer about $25,000, and an individual plan is about $10,000. We pay 70% of our employees' plans here, and they pick up the 30%. And as I mentioned about the OPEB, we do cover our retirement, our retired employees' healthcare as well, and included in that premiums that we pay on an annual basis is approximately $250,000 of our OPEB contribution. And then of course, we have the Medicare employer tax. We talked about the Norfolk County retirement contribution, which for this fiscal year is $845,000. We carry our workers' compensation insurance, which is about $107,000. And the last little piece to make it all balanced is our life insurance share. And we did raise our basic policy from $2,000 to $10,000 in fiscal year '24, which actually doubled our cost. So that's approximately $4.8 million of our budget. And then the long-term debt, as I mentioned, the final payment is on May 15 of 2025, and that's for the middle school building. We're looking as we approach 20-year mark on a lot of these buildings, we do have some large capital projects coming down the pike, and with eliminating $724,000 from the need to pay the debt, hopefully that will then provide some capacity for the towns and thereby just to fund the region's capital projects. And it wouldn't be complete without sort of sharing that outside of the operating budget that we just shared, we do get some federal and state entitlement grants, the largest being our special education grant, which provides about $300,000. We use that to fund educational system positions in our special education department at the middle school and high school. We get the MEKO grant of approximately $340,000 that covers our K through 12 MEKO program, and the largest piece of that really is transportation and the MEKO coordinator. And then we get some various other related title grants of approximately $70,000 that help us fund our mentoring program, tutoring supports for students, and professional developments. And then Judy, you want to?
Yeah. I want to also mention that we get additional financial support, both cash and in-kind, from community-based organizations. from community-based organizations, parent organizations like Positive, PTO, Friends in the Performing Arts, and the athletics, the boosters, the Mudge Foundation, and Individual Families anonymously and otherwise, and other community organizations. And we really, really appreciate how these funds help us to enhance the experience of our students. Nope? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you to the towns of Dover and Sherburne for their continued support and commitment to the highest level of education for our students. So now we'll open it up. Do we have questions or comments?
I have a question. So as a parent who now has children in the private schools, which I've made clear in many comments, I'm wondering how you calculate them into your calculations for budget? Are you counting my children as children who are attending the school, or is that excluded? And how are you figuring that out?
They are excluded. So there's quite a few, I mean, there's hundreds of students in Dover and Sherburne who don't go to Dover and Sherburne schools. The numbers in our budget that we are using to build our budget are only the students enrolled in Dover-Sherburne schools.
Other questions, comments? Anyone on the committee who has questions or comments? We've been through these numbers many times, so we're quite familiar with them. Yes?
I had a couple clarifying questions, but it's okay. I meant to break them down, and then I was listening, so it's okay.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. So should we then, we can move on and?
Oh, I did wrong.
Oh, good.
The clarifying points were, just to clarify, so I know I'm correct. When we're talking about the administrative expenses, the central office expenses and so forth, we split those expenses with the two, with Sherburne and Dover.
Yeah, so the numbers in the region's budget are just your cost share.
Okay.
Right. So central offices, if you, you've got to take administration line items in all three budgets to see the total.
Yes. And then, just to clarify, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, when we were talking about benefits, and we were talking about retiree benefits, and I feel close to this because this is something Judy and I have spent many years talking about, the 50/50 cost share on insurance that retirees are entitled to, that's the state minimum, right?
Yes.
So we can't decide we want to cut the budget and not pay for that.
Yeah, right.
And then also, like, thinking about health insurance, when retirees turn 65, do they stay on our expensive insurance, or do we have cheaper insurance for them?
So when you turn 65 and you go on Medicare?
They have to go on Medicare.
They have to go on Medicare.
So we're just paying the little bitty supplement, not the $25,000.
Although we still, we do have retirees who retire before 65, though, and they are on the active plans, but paying the 50/50.
Okay. So their insurance goes up if they, like, if they decide to leave when they're 50?
Yes, until they turn 65.
Well, they can't retire before they're 55, though, right?
Right.
Okay. We're not doing this forever. Like, someone who's 35, they can't decide.
Right.
They want to call and get your insurance.
But you're not eligible, right?
Okay, just checking.
Yeah. So we have, you know, just to give you the number, like, we have about 13 retirees, about 13, about 13, we have 13 retirees right now who are actually on active plans.
Okay.
And then when they turn 65, then they go on to Medicare, and then we're just paying the supplement, we're paying the 50% of the supplemental.
Thank you. Sorry. Just wanted to clarify that, because it looks, like, I'm looking at it, and I'm like, oh, that's kind of generous, and then just thinking in the back of my mind, I'm like, some of this state requires us to do.
Right, that's the minimum. Right, and we used to be, I remember, 70/30 at the region.
Well, yes. I mean, I didn't want to brag.
Yeah, yeah.
Worked hard with those bargaining groups to get that down.
Exactly. Right.
And just to clarify, this is just the region budget, so this is just middle and high school.
Correct.
Because that's, I want people to make sure, because I've been on the other side with Sherburne, with just the Sherburne.
So if you would like to join us on next Tuesday and Thursday, I'll be giving the same presentations for Dover and Sherburne. And a little bit of difference there, to your point about students, so our out-of-district students, so students who are on our special education IEPs who don't, who are not registered within our local schools and go out-of-district. There, when you look at the Dover budget and the Sherburne budget, that's looking at out-of-district costs for children 3 to 22. The region doesn't have any out-of-district costs in their budget because of the regional agreement puts that responsibility with the towns. And so you'll see that piece of the budget when we present the two locals next week.
And that's just kids who are going out of district because our programming here wasn't special.
On IEP, yeah, on an IEP.
So you all wouldn't have paid for weights?
No.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
So I was wondering about, you talked about adding the third guiding counselor, so everybody gets that continuity through the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. What exactly is the function of them? Is it only to provide academic input, or is it something else that the guidance counselor is doing?
No, I think they do much more, send to our academic.
Sure, they certainly help with the academic counseling, and if a student needs academic help, making sure that they either connect with their teachers or the available supports during the school day. But certainly they're there for social, emotional help, for peer interactions, for times when perhaps they make a bad choice and need to reflect on it and need a little support to get through that, if there's problems going on at home or things that they need support with. It's both.
Thank you.
It's like, an example, like, my daughter, when she was in the middle school, had terrible scoliosis, and she had to have a back brace, and she was losing her mind because that meant changing for gym, where was she going to change, how was she, you know, how's that all going to be managed? And so her guidance counselor was the point person that I could call and say, please help me navigate this, you know, what are we going to do? She's really, really anxious. She met with her, she met with the gym teacher, PE teacher, they organized a special pass system so she could have a stall, so she didn't have to, like, you know, because she couldn't take PE with the back brace on, so she had to get naked, and it was very stressful. So like, just all those, like, other beyond just, also academics, but just that other stuff, you know, puberty things, you know, like, if kids are anxious, like, you know, whatever, like, that's the person that you call in the middle school, which is helpful because, like, elementary school, you would talk to the teacher, and they have, like, seven teachers, so this has been really good.
All right. Thank you, Maggie. Anything else, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We shall move on to certify the FY '25 budget. And I am going to direct you all to the motion that is in your packet so that I don't have to read the motion. But the first motion in general is to adopt the fiscal year '25 budget in the amount of $28,877,195, and as further explained or set forth in our packet. So do I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year '25 budget?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Colleen, third second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Sorry.
Just your computer.
I don't know how to turn it off. Okay, so then, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous. I shouldn't say all opposed, none. Okay, it is unanimous. And then our second motion is to approve the utilization of $230,000 of the June 30, 2023 Certified Excess and Deficiency Funds for the fiscal year '25 budget. Can I have that motion?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Thank you, Mark. Can I have a second?
Angie Johnson, second.
Thank you, Angie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It carries unanimously. Okay.
Thank you, and I'll just say, I provided with you that, now that you're done, so now moves on to the towns, but I gave you the dates, both for the open hearings at the two towns and also their town meetings. And tomorrow morning, our treasurer will be on site, and he will send the certification letters to both town treasurers so that they're aware of what was approved tonight. And so, well, we'll be done with our piece on this.
Excellent. Dawn, you are fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're going to close the hearing on our budget and continue our meeting. And Dawn, you're up.
Yeah, so I'll go fairly quickly. You have your standard warrant reports for what's been approved since you last met. And on your monthly financial report, the new information, remember, it's in bold, it is all in the revenue section. And so we did receive our first Chapter 71 reimbursement payment, came in a little lower than we were anticipating, but it's still reflecting an 80% reimbursement. But you'll see that we don't have quite as large of a variance as we thought. There's always a chance that when we get our June payment, if there's excess money in that budget, we'll get more than that, but that's still, we usually don't know that till June 30th. And so that is a reduction of about $60,000 of what we anticipated. We did not change the contribution, though, for the fiscal year '25, that's 230, but that's, you know, we'll have that money to be able to move forward with. And one other revision that we did, now that we're starting spring session of athletics, we did decrease a little bit of what we were anticipating, and we've been seeing this over the last year or two, the spring participation, even though it's still high, we're having families meet the cap, because we raised the fee, we made the cap a little bit lower. And so I think we're just trying to figure that what that is going to be, but we're anticipating it will be a little bit lower, and then probably fiscal year '26, we can look at our budget again and see where we are. That's the only thing I had to say about operations for the month closing February 29th. The other good news is our auditors have been in, they did their initial fill work during February break, and we are on the fast track now, hopefully, to bring your financials, probably May is what I'm thinking. And I'm just going to continue on real fast because I just got a quick update. So the discussion item is on capital projects update. So in May, I'll probably bring forward, I will bring forward, probably the votes to approve use of EMD for some of the capital projects. We're holding off on that because we're waiting for, so the large rooftop unit replacement project is out to bid right now. The bids are due by, the bid opening is March 27th. As I've been sort of sharing with you, the cost estimates in today's world versus what we approved two years ago, it's quite different. The bid went out with an estimated cost of $2 million, but because we had 1.2 approved, I know we have some other funds we can apply to it, we did bid it with an alternate, so that gives us choices. So we did the main bid for four of the seven rooftop units, and three as alternate one, so that if it's more than we can handle, we can go with the four. That's not what our preference would be, but it gives us some financial work to play around with that. So in May, I will bring forward to you that final approval, along with the final approval if we need to bring any more money in from the region's accounts for the bleacher and press box. So that did go out to bid as well, that bid opened. We were hoping for more like $150,000, it came in about $215,000. I am working to see if there's any things that we can trim back a little bit that aren't going to make a difference, and so I'm working on the final number. We will then reach out to a couple other groups that are interested in contributing, and then in May, I may be coming to the school committee to sort of help whatever we're short. But it's all set to start June 24th, so we're really excited about that, and it's going to be a huge change. I keep telling everyone that the bleachers are going to run from the 20-yard line to the 20-yard line with no treehouse, it's actually a true press box. So visually, we will have to get used to that, but that's exciting. So May, I'm going to give you those updates to sort of, to set the stage, but in May, we'll be bringing forward another vote for use of EMD.
Great, thank you. All right. So our first action item now is to vote on the MEKO representative to our school committee. This is the second read of the policy. I believe that it's, in fact, I know that it is in your packets. So are there questions, comments about that policy? I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, should we simply move on then to vote? So do I have a motion to approve, to adopt, the MEKO representative to our school committee policy that is contained in your packet?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Thank you. Colleen, do I have a second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Okay. Any discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposition? No, the vote carries unanimously. All right, so now we can move on to the consent agenda. I need to specifically just mention that there were donations that, again, are in your packet from the Mudge Foundation for Educators to Attend a Conference, from Michelle Covell is donating a tenor sax, from the Sustainability Committee, from students who raised money to get a new water cooler filler, from OpenFields, they're getting a storage pod so that they can store some stage equipment, and that will also help us to save money in the long run because it's something that the school can use as well, and from Children's Hospital for Doctor Medical Services during the fall football season. So those are the donations that we're voting on to accept. We're also approving two sets of minutes and the high school overnight field trip to Tufts University. So does anyone have any questions with regard to the consent agenda? Anything they want to?
I just want to make a brief comment about the donation from, well, all the donations, which are so wonderful.
Yeah.
But specifically, the donation from OpenFields, and when my kids were younger, we were involved in OpenFields, they're grown up now, we're not, but that is so helpful. When my children attended the high school and the middle school and were involved in the plays, like, anyone who's ever attended the play, you see, like, staging, and every year, like, volunteers would build the staging, and then the day after the play, you have to take it down and you have to throw it out because there was nowhere at school to store it, and so many years, like, it's so sad because they worked so hard to build it. So the idea that we could have some, like, reusable staging that would minimize that the day you throw all that out in the dumpster is like the worst day. So thank you so much to OpenFields and to the school for solving part of that problem because unfortunately, if you ever go in the backstage, there's not, like, in other theaters, like, whole shops and rooms of storage, so.
Yeah.
I was overjoyed to read it. Thank you.
Yeah, I completely, having been a drama mama eons ago, I completely agree with you.
It's the saddest day.
Yeah, and I'm hopeful that it also forwards our sustainability goals.
Well, that's what they, I saw the connection between the sustainability team and the Bible.
Yeah, exactly.
The sustainability kids and team knows that we could do this and can also be happy about that.
Right. All right, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Angie Johnson, so moved.
Thank you, Angie. Do I have a second?
Mark Healy, second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, we see the informational items there, you can take a look at those, and our next meeting is May 7th. Now I will move to adjourn. Do I need to move, or, yeah, can I move?
Squish, squish.
On the what?
It was part of the package.
Okay. On what?
You proved it already.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Second.
Colleen Burt.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? No, passes unanimously. And it is 6:50.
Great, thank you.